Okay.
Hello.
A meeting is called to order at seven eleven. And we have all three selectmen present here from public. We don't have anything from the public, to my knowledge, for selectmen's briefing. Most of what I'm going to talk about is covered in the items that we already have here. That we already have on our agenda. I'm trying to think if there's anything unique beyond that. No, other than we do have that senior center anniversary tomorrow, so it's a good thing to pop into. I will be there. My husband will be there. Let's see. Okay, that's all. That's all I have unless you have any questions about anything.
Um, I have a question. What's going on with the inland wetlands?
With the, we have put out an ad for an inland wetlands agent. And we put it out. Where do we put it? We put the ad out for the inland wetlands agent to offer replacement.
We know, we have a call, I have a call into Nikog. Conservation District. Our conservation district because Bolton has an inland wetlands agent from their conservation district. And then somebody suggested we call Nikog because Jim Larkin.
And he's seventy dollars an hour.
Seventy-five. No, I ran into Lenny.
Oh, you ran into Lenny? Does he complain?
No, I was just concerned.
Yeah, we are too, so we're trying to do.
Stand still.
Yeah.
Is there no way to work something out with Bruce? I mean, have you talked to him since your last?
No, he walked out.
Okay.
Okay, and the thing is, even if they were using his services afterwards, after he had resigned before, April first, that was supposed to be his last day, they never said anything to us. I mean, I looked at it and went, why is this guy hanging around? And then when he announced, when he boldly announced that he wanted a thousand dollars a month, that's when I said, well, I would have to put that through the selectmen kind of thing. And he didn't, I don't think he liked that. Well, he left. I think he thought that we could do that verbally because that's how he's been dealing with inland wetlands.
We budgeted what, thirty-five thousand for salary for that position?
I don't recall.
Yeah, I think it's thirty or thirty-five.
So Nikog may be an option. Which is nice because they can, he can work with Sil.
Let me mention that. I mean, he was concerned because I guess we were paying through thirty-five an hour and Nikog wanted.
Yeah, he says it's like double. Actually, I thought it was seventy, but it's double.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're doing what we can. But he also, remember, he resigned because he didn't have time.
I was shocked when, when you told me he was leaving.
Well, he said he had so much on his platter.
He took a full-time somewhere else, right?
Okay, he's full-time in the town of Pomford. Was it Pomford or, yeah, Pomford? Or is it Putnam?
I think he's from Pomford.
Yeah, but he.
Was it?
So it's Putnam. He's full-time there and he has a variety of roles there. He doesn't have just one. They lost some person or whatever, so that's why he came in and he gave notice. So again, then it was odd that, yeah, I see him hanging around. And at meetings and stuff, and, and then they thanked him for his service and everything and he was still around. So.
Yeah, I, I, I think it was an oversight that there wasn't better communication there from them.
Oh, I can tell you that for a fact.
You know.
You know, it's unfortunate.
I was always very pleased with, with Bruce because I thought he took an extra step to try to let me know what was going on, you know, he'd come up on Friday nights or whatever.
Yeah, well, there, there's certainly a situation that he was involved with that. I don't know that it was handled in an impartial, I don't think it was handled in an impartial way.
Eleven thousand's a salary?
So, we're working on it.
So we're working on it. Do we have outstanding permits or, I mean, applications or anything?
Not to my knowledge. Okay, but I'm not down there. So I can do a follow-up to see what the status is, but I would have thought that.
Now, Lenny said there's nobody answering the phones or anything else. And I said, I thought Katie would be doing that.
No, we had, we have, well, first of all, we had, Katie was out for a day.
A what?
Katie was out for a day, so I don't know when he called, but Katie answered some.
I ran into him last Friday or something.
Yeah.
And he just said that he, they needed somebody answering the phones and referring, taking notes or whatever.
Oh, he's saying that that's what he needs service for.
And he said nobody was doing it. I said, well, Katie's in that office, why would she be answering the phone?
Well, she does answer the phone, and I don't know that they have given her instructions about what they're looking for. Because normally she would not have been the person getting intimately involved in the details of some of what the.
Permitting.
The wetlands agent was doing. But certainly she, she deals with permits and all that. I, I can actually, I'll talk with her just to find out how she's handling it at this point in time and make sure that it's clear to her that, at a minimum, she needs to take down the information. And I thought that Mike D'Amato was taking at least a cursory look at the items that were coming in so that he could see which ones really needed detention.
So, but we have advertised for it somewhere.
We've put feelers up.
Advertised and put feelers on?
We tried to put an ad out on your association. I don't want job postings.
So we haven't advertised.
So where do we, if we.
I don't know.
I thought.
I always think, I always think of CCM when I think of something like that, but I don't know if they, are they still doing municipal job apps?
Yeah, but I can put an ad out on that. That's going to cost us hundred fifty bucks, but I can put an ad out on that, but I don't. I usually look at them once a week and there are no. I haven't noticed anything as far as patients.
And then didn't we use Yukon?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we use Yukon a couple, a couple of years ago for municipal or was that just BPW?
That was just public works.
Okay, because they had to think statewide.
Okay.
That we advertised on.
I wonder if we could share one with another town.
Why not?
Actually, we got, anyone remember that, that guy who expressed an interest from Yukon, he was a sophomore biology major and he thought he could be wetland teacher.
I don't know if he could hold, hold his own with some of the things.
There was.
I thought we were sharing, like, when Bruce was here, I thought we were sharing him.
Oh, we are sharing him, but he has his own commitments other places. It's not like we're in a contract with another country or something. I wonder, you know, I've never asked, um, Jim Rupert.
I did.
Oh, did you?
They, they use a wetlands agent out of their conservation district and it costs them, I think it's twelve fifty a month. And it's two days a week in the office involved.
And Bruce was doing how many dates for us?
He would just show, he'd show up after hours.
I saw him on Fridays.
Only Fridays and after hours for the most part.
So basically, a day plus the meetings and whatever inspections.
Right, and they haven't, hadn't been having meetings until fairly recently. So.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. For whatever reason, I thought we had it posted. So, um, we'll see what else we can do. There's always Nikog temporarily.
Yeah. Uncheap though, I hate to spend that much an hour, but at the same time, we, I think we have a statutory requirement, so I mean, applies for an application to respond in a certain amount of time.
Correct. But we haven't.
Somebody told us that Jim is their wetland teacher.
Jim who?
Larkin.
Jim Larkin? Okay, we'll find out.
I don't remember.
Let me make a note. Yes, it's very uncomfortable. Yes, and the communications could have been better. I think one of the things I was startled at is when I was asked for a copy of the regulations, inland wetland regulations.
Yeah.
I was asked to make copies for the board for that commission. And I did, or I had, you know, Katie did it toot sweet. And then when I gave them to them, I, I had to ask the question of what have you been working with? If you didn't have a copy. And they said, oh, even, they don't change often. And then it was, they didn't know how to print them or didn't want to print them from the website. So, so I had my one question, then I said, you know, I'm not your secretary, because I couldn't think what else to say. But Katie took care of it real quickly. So if they need help or, you know, something, I'm sure she's up to it.
I don't remember all the members on there, but.
They also had to send me a membership list because I had none of their emails except Lenny's. So, and I can forward that contact list to you.
Been on there for years and years.
There are lips to resign hopefully.
All right. Anything else for selectmen's briefing? Any other questions you have for selectmen's briefing?
Not right now.
Okay, I'm sure you'll save them up for me. Okay, here for boards acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of June third.
I don't remember getting them, and I went on the website this morning and they weren't on there. I didn't see them on.
Really?
Maybe I missed them.
I'm looking.
They went to Karen and I.
Yep, you're right. You're right, they're not out there yet. So we'll do a follow-up.
Let's pass on them.
On that.
You have them, you've got them, right?
I don't, I couldn't find them where I got them.
Okay.
But they weren't, they weren't posted.
All right, we'll just pick up on that in the next meeting.
I saw, I did make a copy of the. Hey, I lied. I printed out, oh, are these the ones you did? Just, were these here?
Yeah, it's one of your books.
Okay, okay. I hadn't seen that. Why don't we just pass them next week till we get them posted?
Do we have a meeting next week?
Uh, our next meeting.
Our next meeting, okay.
There's no urgency, right?
Okay. Uh, okay. Here, here from boards, commissions, committees, nothing special there. Old business, Ashford School Roof Replacement Project status. I can tell you for a fact, they started today. I was there this morning, saw the materials they brought in, they were starting to unload them. And everybody seemed to know what they were doing. And we'll see how it goes. We also had a, we had a really.
Owners rep there too, or?
Owners rep wasn't there at that time, and I didn't see the architect either, but I saw the workers. They looked like they knew what they were doing. I'm sure they were directed.
Were they just staging?
Sorry, they were staging. Yeah. And what I also did was I stopped in at some of the houses that are near there because they're going to have, be having a very loud banging for the next week and a half or two. And it's when they use something that draws up materials, and I guess when it comes down, it really bangs loud. And we've got someone who raises, what, alpacas. Right near there, she's got animals and everything, so I stopped at her house.
Llamas.
Llamas, sorry. She doesn't have any alpacas? I thought she did. They're fussier. I thought she had some alpacas too.
Llamas.
Okay, llamas. Anyway, I saw Carol stop there, stopped and talked with somebody else, who lived, people that lived close to the school. Just to, who was lovely, just to let them know what's going on. Okay, and then some people weren't home, so I couldn't do that. We also had a very good meeting last Thursday, I think it was. For, where it was not a kickoff meeting, pre-construction meeting. And I got things worked out. So, uh, next one is, if you don't have any questions about that, review Ashford's.
Have they given you a construction timeline? I know you asked for one.
Uh, we're going to have two-week look-aheads. The bottom line is it has to be done by the third week of August.
But they haven't given you a.
They couldn't break it down quite that way, and I don't, I don't think they really operate quite that way either, as much as I wanted it broken down.
Well, they don't know what they're going to find when they fall off the old roof.
Yeah, I did ask about it, and that's when they just kept saying two-week look ahead. Okay. And we have regular meetings set up every two weeks, although we're having, the next one, we're having next, we had one. Uh, next one is this week at ten o'clock in the morning. And then all the other ones are, every other week after that, three-thirty on Thursdays. So, and that's right on through at least September fifth. I've got them all scheduled. All right, and the next thing is review Ashford School bonding timetable is prepared by our financial advisor. We are continuing with our bonding. They did give us a timetable. I don't have it in front of me, but it coincides with, um, the work that's being done. Discuss and/or act on Ashford School Roof Solar Options Purchase Power, Power Purchase Agreement versus Municipal Ownership. I don't know that we're ready to have this meeting to discuss solar. You know, as, uh, we were going to have a kind of a little committee meeting with the school, the school roof committee.
Yeah, I know the last time we talked, I, I was saying that my preference would be if we could call like a public hearing. But maybe you want to do this committee meeting first?
First, I want, I would like to make sure that when we go into the public hearing, that all of the principals involved in this, who would be people able to speak to it.
Yeah.
Are at least on the same page, if not, they at least all understand the positions everybody's coming from. And then we'll have the public hearing, depending on what comes out of that group. Uh, let's see. Discuss and act on ACE equipment logging request accessing Kettle Rock property. It was hard, but I finally got a letter drafted and to the, sent off to Duncan to take a look at it. And it has two additional items or two items that need to be addressed. One is a seventy-five hundred dollar performance bond, cash performance bond to be paid at the time of the signing of the lease agreement. It is a, a temporary lease agreement to cross the property. And we had seen the other one that was put together from last year, so I sent that one back to Duncan and just said, can you add this to it and also change the dates for the access to, hopefully, June eighteenth, which is tomorrow, to September through September thirtieth, which is over three months. And the last lease agreement was three months. You know, Bill has raised the issue that, you know, some people think this is the worst time of year to be doing it. And, and that the best time is during the winter, but the ground didn't freeze during the winter, and we had so much rain and sleet and everything during the winter that it would not have been able to be done last year.
I mean, if the ground's frozen, yeah, it's time to do it.
But the ground never really froze because it's so saturated.
Because originally, he wanted to go in there in October, November.
October first to December thirty-first is what the original one was.
Then he came, said he wanted September first, and I said, well, you were talking about ground being frozen and everything else. But anyway, the winter was the theory because the ground's frozen here, less, less apt to do damage.
Understood.
I never realized that. I figured they'd want to go in. The only other thing I thought, maybe they don't want to go in when the trees are full. Wait till it.
I wouldn't want the limbs on, the leaves on the trees.
I didn't, I didn't read your letter, but I know we had briefly discussed, have you put anything in there that any additional legal costs are to be borne by ACE?
No, I didn't think of that. You may have told me and I may have forgotten.
We briefly discussed that.
Legal costs. I'll make sure that Becca's added too. Um, anyway, so yeah, Mr. Rendo is, he is definitely waiting. And, and again, Richard Zulich is going to oversee. He'll keep, he can go down there, he'll have authority to stop whatever they're doing if he finds they're doing anything they shouldn't be. And he's watching to, he'll be watching to see if they're doing best practices. Also, I can't remember, Roger, if you were here at one of the selectmen's meetings where I mentioned that Rick Zulich grabbed up, um, Mr. Rendo, and they walked the path, the trail that's going to be used.
Yep.
So, uh, finalized time building, town building use fee schedule and Ashford Food Bank donation policy. Not finalized yet. We know what the fee schedule is that they're charging today, and not a lot of concern there at this point.
No, and we've got revenue.
The one question I haven't gotten the answer to yet, only because it slipped my mind, I'm sorry, is, are we charging for them to use the open air area next to the old post office? You know, is, is that what they're paying their fees on? And I didn't see anything in the.
The only thing I allowed them to do, which they weren't doing before, but they had keys for the old post office.
Yeah.
Was to use the restroom.
And that is, that is how they use.
They're still doing it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't charge them.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't charge them for that area. If they're going to use the buildings, yeah, wear and tear on the buildings, no.
If there's cleaning or if there's damage done, obviously, for the post offices, result of their use.
I can't, I can't see them, charging them for that anymore than we charge for when we have things going on at Pomfet Alacar.
You know, the only thing that we did at their request a couple of times was go in there and grade it. Because they've got, you know, potholes and water.
And we should grade it anyway.
It should, it's a park, public parking lot, it should be safe as possible without paving it.
Um. Okay, Ashford Volunteer Fire Station twenty roof update. Uh, as you know, the, uh, the monies for that was, were approved by the public. And we saw the chief today. We'll be working with him, but we want to get that started as soon as possible. He does say he's going to go up, he will go up and personally inspect to see if they put in holes where they're not supposed to when they get done.
Now, have we hired the contractor and everything?
No, I have not signed the contract.
Did we advertise?
Oh yeah, we advertised and we got.
So we've selected a contractor.
Yes.
Is it, we're taking the contractor or place?
Or whatever. Okay.
So.
We just hadn't signed the contract yet.
Correct. The other thing is, we have to make sure we know when the solar can come off. So first thing we're doing is going, when can the contractor start? Okay, to make sure we've got that. And then we have to make sure that we can get the solar company to come out and take off the, the solar.
Yeah.
And put it someplace safe. The, uh, we talked with town council and they don't think that it's a viable plan to try and.
What was their comment about the contract?
I forgot. It was pretty good. It was.
I can only imagine.
It, it was pretty much that dog don't hunt, but they just say it that way. It's, uh, it wasn't a viable thing to pursue. No, they couldn't really make a coherent case for it, the one that would be accepted. It would be really stretching it, so not worth it. Which is at least good to get an answer because we were kind of holding on based upon what they would come back with. So, uh, we're trying to get those, those dates lined up. Uh, new business, board and commission appointments. We don't have anyone to fill any of these, economic development, inland wetlands and water courses, agriculture commission and zoning board of fields. Uh, tax refunds, I believe there are no tax refunds tonight. Uh, we need to approve submission to OPM of a four-year steep opt-in letter in conformance with PAO five one ninety-four. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to approve this. I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Every four years?
Yeah.
Every four years. Uh, any more discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah.
Uh, motion passes unanimously, unanimously, thank you. Approve thirtieth senior center anniversary proclamation.
So move, seconded.
Okay, do we have one yet? I don't think I've actually had, Chris spread one up. What about the one from the state?
That'll be there tomorrow. Jeff will be there somewhere between quarter of and.
Oh, Jeff is coming? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, good.
And I asked him also to invite, um.
Pat?
Pat.
You asked him to invite Pat?
Well, he said he was going to, because I said, should I call, when I asked him for the proclamation, I said, should I call Pat? And he said, no, I'll call him. And I said, well, when you do, then invite him then.
Okay, okay. Um, and in terms of ours, do we know what we want to say? Because we have to write one up for the town. As well.
Why?
Actually, that's what Kit requested. She wanted one from the town and she wanted, actually, she wasn't clear when she started out. And she didn't give me the information before the fifteenth of the month, because I would have gotten our proclamation and put it in the Ashford Citizen.
So the town's giving itself a proclamation.
Don't the selectmen do proclamations?
We can do a proclamation for whatever we wanted. I think just a proclamation recognizing the thirty years of, of, uh, working with Ashford seniors at the, uh, since the grand opening of the ribbon cutting for the Earl Smith Senior Center. And I, I went over there, I don't remember if it was Thursday or Friday, with my wife, because she had made a scrapbook and donated.
I heard they're going to have it out there and.
Yeah, we found, Kit couldn't find it, Linda started ravaging through some stuff she found. She's got several books there.
Did she find them there?
Yeah. But I don't understand it, Roger. I have a lot more here than that. I don't know what happened. Anyway, I don't, I don't think it has to be too fancy, just in recognition of the thirty years of operation and, uh, of the ground, of the ribbon cutting for the Earl Smith Senior Center. Do we want to mention ASCO? Working with the senior center and the, uh.
To me, I think it's appropriate, only because they.
We're trying to bring them together.
Yeah. And something with ASCO, recognizing them.
So we're all.
Do we need to say anything about commission on aging or anything like that, or just?
I wouldn't.
No.
If you wanted, though, you could. I mean, there, for a while, it was in the social service office, it wasn't always over there.
Yeah.
But they've certainly been active there. What time is this for? It's eleven thirty, I'm told. It was twelve twelve originally, and then I was told Friday it was eleven.
If you're going to eat, they're going to charge you fourteen bucks.
Twelve.
Oh, is it twelve?
That's what she told me.
Maybe they'll charge your meat fourteen. You never know. Okay.
Personally, I'm surprised we're charging. That is what it is.
Yes, but they've already got over budget, so they have to charge. And they're going to hold it inside. They're going to cook the hamburgers and stuff inside.
I was putting my air conditions in, it's.
Are your air conditioners in? I'm doing air conditioning tomorrow.
It's going to be unhealthy tomorrow, from what they're saying.
Okay. Uh, all right, well, Chris, maybe you and I can craft something, but, um, okay, I hate to have you.
Don't we have a form?
I have lots of forms.
Proclamation.
And we got forms, we got forms. Okay, so, all in favor of that proclamation from the board of selectmen? Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Um, agenda items for upcoming board of selectmen meetings.
Some point you guys are going to have to deal with the agriculture commission and the ordinance revisions that they want.
Did we get?
Yes, and actually, um, what I'd like to do with that is, initially, I was thinking, I would really like, I would really like the assessor to kind of run us through them first, so that we understand them before having the. Before having the. Ag commission come in and, you know, and, and we talk through it with them. I didn't know how to do that.
Should I see if Lynn can come to the next meeting?
Sorry?
Should I see if Lynn can come to?
Well, it was, it's either at the last next meeting. Which means the ag commission will come, because I would tell them that they're, you know, we're gonna be having that on the agenda, I promised them I would and we should. But I was kind of hoping that we'd have a little working meeting to go through it, so you'd understand.
Didn't you ask them for their, their changes or the recommendations?
Sorry?
Didn't you ask them to submit? Updated changes they wanted to make and then we were asked, gonna ask.
And Lynn has worked, Lynn has worked on it and what she's done is she's done an assessment analysis, if you will, of, um, I wanted to know. How it will impact the town financially. Uh, who would benefit, you know, be specific.
Yeah.
So that we can actually see. The reality of it, and so she uh, has done that.
Well, why don't, why the, could you give Roger and I a package of the, the, the? Yeah, we don't need it necessarily, if you, she has the data, just. No, and then, and then the data that we got from Lynn and then. We won't have to move on to the next meeting, maybe the following one, we'll invite the egg commission, if it's appropriate.
That would be good.
It'll give us a chance to. Um.
I like that.
I'd like to make a quick motion just to go into executive session to discuss um, human resource strategies.
Sure, about human resource strategies, do we have a motion, make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To do what?
To discuss um. Open positions in town.
Okay.
And um, my suggestion for the next meeting. For the agenda is that we put social services on there.
We would anyway. We. And actually, we may end up based, depending, we may end up with a special meeting on this.
That's fine.
That is gonna happen maybe around next Thursday or Friday, not this coming one, the following week. Okay, so yes, let's, um, so that's the motion to go into executive session and going into executive session will be the three of us and Chris, right?
Yes.
Okay, and because we're going into executive session, I'm going to end the recording of the meeting at this point. And uh, the actual end time for the meeting, when we come out of executive session, will be reported in the written minutes.